All right, thanks. I'm the half of the League of Women Voters in Shrewsbank County, the city council of Central Oregon. Welcome to the Redmond City Council Candidate Forum. My name is Tim Traynor, I'm the editor of the Redmond spokesman. Thank you to the candidates who are participating. Appreciate the gratitude of running for office. The candidates in this race are Tobias Coleman for Wayne there, so folks know ya, for Evelyn, Alan Lawyer, Jay Patrick, and Shannon Wedding. Please hold your applause and refrain from comments during the forum. Candidates will have one minute for opening remarks and one and a half minutes to answer each question. Questions have been submitted by the public and screened by the League of Women Voters. Each candidate will have two minutes for closing remarks. For opening statements, we have randomly selected the order and the order of the question. Who answers first will be rotated after that. So we begin with candidate opening statements. Opening statements for a one-minute opening statement. And Alan, you can choose to go first. It's about one minute, please.
So hi, everybody, thank you for coming. My name is Alan Lawyer, I'm running for Redmond City Council, obviously. I'm a native Oregonian. I've lived in Redmond for a little over 10 years now. My current occupation, I'm a wastewater operator, so I've been in the wastewater industry for a little over nine years. I have two children and a lovely wife. My wife is in healthcare. And this is a little bit about me. I'm running for city council because I don't think the current council has adequately addressed the severe issues that our city faces. And I think that I could add a good voice to the council to more effectively address those issues. And that's why I'm running.
Shannon, you're next.
Shannon Wedding, I can stand up.
You don't really need to stand up.
Oh, thank you. Shannon Wedding, I'm currently serving in my fourth year as a city councillor and running for reelection. Back road about me, I'm a licensed civil engineer, licensed support state. I've worked on large-scale infrastructure projects, whether it be transportation, water, wastewater, master plans, master developments. So that's where my technical mind really lends to being a city councillor. I can evaluate, I have looked at the different types of project deliveries. I've been in Central Oregon for about six years now, just shy of six years. But I really care about this community here. And you'll hear me say, everybody has heard me say it, infrastructure doesn't have an opinion, but it's about responsible growth and how we can do that as a community and as a council and as a city. So that's really why I chose to rerun, because I feel like public service is part of me, civil service is part of who I am. I'm out of time.
Jay, we'll go down line now.
All right, I'll have to be pretty quick here. I'm a 24-year, I'm on council for 24 years, my name is Jay Patrick. And I appreciate your vote, please. I took two years off, and in that two years that I was off council and part of the public, I saw from the chief seats that the public was not really improving a lot and not, when their problems were not really heard. And that's where I want great transparency, accountability, and fiscal responsibility and common sense decision-making for the council. I want to have, I want to look forward to having four councils being, or four meetings here where the public can interact, they can say their opinions, say their problems, say what their life, your mind, and be talked about with the council, city in Oregon. I think that would be really good for the community. And that's why I'm running.
That sounds nice.
My name is Tobias Coleman. I am the current Redmond City councillor. I was appointed to Ed's two years, so this is my first election. It's been a while, but. So I have been living in Redmond for seven years. I have two wonderful boys and a wife, which is her first, obviously. And we love it. I am the general manager of SCP Redmond, the historical hotel downtown. And I was able to be a part of that transition from that hotel and moving as a public entity, working with the city to move Redmond forward. And if you look downtown right now, that is a direct result of what the city is doing. So why am I running? I'm running to keep momentum on these projects. We're growing really, really fast, we have a lot of irons in the fire. And I think it takes a responsible council to do that. And our current council is working really hard for you, taxpayers, and we want to continue that.
My name is Kupri. Good evening, my name is Kupri. I was born and raised in New York City, I present as a council, or a city council now. I attended New York University for management, this is administration. I've also was in New York State Management School. I'm in Redmond because I'm a public servant, and I like serving for the public. Most of you guys know me, I was originally downtown. And that's my new job, I'm a public servant. So Redmond's a great place, I saw a lot of potential here for growth. I saw a lot of potential for things to happen. And I knew that my managerial, 30-plus years of managerial experience would be of benefit at here, and so that's why I'm running for city council. Thank you.
Just said, some folks in the audience may be having a hard time hearing you, so we've got a little bit where we're trying to hold the mics as well. Well, we'll start with, you have one and a half minutes to answer this question, we'll start with Council Wedding, we'll go back in the same order. These questions are all for the public and the women voters as well. So this said, beginner is, what motivates you and qualifies you to run for this position?
I think I've already touched on that a bit, what motivates me personally. What motivates me personally is that drive for civil service. I really love serving the city of Redmond. I worked for a large municipality for many years, managing large budgets, and I saw that I could provide that knowledge as the city councillor when I decided to run four years ago. That's my biggest driver, and as I said, I've already mentioned, it's the technical background. Redmond is growing, we have multiple large capital improvement projects going on, whether you talk about the airport, the public safety facility, think about transportation in town, think about the annexations we're seeing. So how I can lend from a project perspective and analytical perspective for responsible growth here in Redmond.
Great, thank you. Mr. Patrick?
Well, I've always, I've always thought that serving other people, hearing what they have to say, helping them along was what I needed to do. And that's why, back in 2000, I started on council, I think I am. And I worked there, I had said, oh, two years ago, and then I'm in off, and I can't get away from it, it's like a sickness. And so I want to go back to council, where I believe I can, I can help with the projects. We've seen, we moved the traffic downtown to the bylaws. We built Centennial Park, that was huge. We moved into the school district's building and made the city hall, that was huge. We've just done a number of big item things in Redmond now, the airports going on, with their expansion. We're bringing Core Three, it's a statewide project in it now, which will be a firefighter and police organization that will man the house out there. We've got the wetlands coming up, we just have another project that I believe I can help with, so that's why I'm running.
Mr. Coleman?
I feel I am uniquely qualified as a downtown business owner. I wish I did. Business operator, I'll be a little closer, my mic's a little low. I've been on, my experience for the last two years on council of giving up to date on all the different issues that are facing us, and we're tackling them all at the same time. And we've done more in the last two years than we've done in the last 20 years in terms of just moving things forward. If something comes to our attention, we're addressing it immediately. When we have people that come to council and make comments that they're facing something, we refer to the right departments on the city staff to make sure that we're getting those taken care of and updated as quickly as possible. So I think having the business background, having experience with the city, I was also on Durant, which is downtown urban renewable. I was on Chamber Board of Directors. How you feeling? Yeah, so I've been, I've been part of this community for the last seven years, so I've been trying to do as much as I can. And I think those qualifications really make it that I'm uniquely qualified for other careers.
Thank you. Like I said, I have 30-plus years of experience of leadership and management. I've been a coach throughout my life, I've also been a mentor. When I was in the Navy, I was a leader on my ship, media to help reduce friction among the men. I've supervised over 70 law enforcement officers with my time as a sheriff, and I just know I have the skills in leadership. Right now, this council is doing an excellent job. You may disagree with me, but that's okay. The fact of the matter is this, we're moving the city in the right direction. We're positive about what we're doing, we discuss things, and we know how to work together as a team. Not all councils work together as a team, but teamwork is very important. If you don't have it, you won't get anywhere. So I'm committed to this community, I live here now. I'm not going to turn to New York like people say I would, it would take 100 years to do that anyway. But the fact of the matter is that, you know, Redmond's moving in the right direction, and I want to keep the momentum going as well. Thank you.
On April 27th, 2008, I took an oath to support and defend the Constitution of the United States in my military service. The Constitution defines what we do as a council and guides us, our ethics, and our, our way of life here in the United States locally. I think that that oath is more important now than ever. I used to work for the city of Redmond for five years, and I think that experience gives me a unique insight onto how the decisions that councils make affect not only the employees of the council, or of the city, but also the citizens of the city. And I think that I bring in a unique perspective in that way. I also, I, I went to school for business, and I ran a business for several years, I ended up selling it. And in doing that, I learned a lot about what drives the business climate here, and I think that I can help support the business community and let it grow and to hopefully recruit more prosperous businesses to the city. Thank you.
Mr. Patrick, we'll start with you with our next question here. What is your top concern in the city, and how do you believe it could be addressed during your term?
Well, I touch on, one of the biggest things to me is that unity and purpose. I think, I believe, for me, on council, that I've seen the community not being heard. So I want to open it up, have the council and the community in one room, like I said before. I think that's a huge thing. It's easy to do, you just have that communication. And along with, I think the airport, the building that we're going to, the public safety building, the wetlands, the building at North Point, which is supposed to be a low, or supposed to be an affordable place to live, 48rd dot northeast to Redmond, I believe it's called, or point, we changed the name to it twice. But that one's big, I think that needs to be handled well. We also have a lot of how we move in on that, on Northwest, we have lots of traffic issues. O'Neill in 97, Hemmels in 126, 35th in 126. So there are a lot of things happening, the public needs to help us be aware of and solve.
So there's a few major issues that we're dealing with here. I think all of these stem from growth. We are one of the fastest-growing cities in Oregon, and I think the one that I, really is on top of my mind is housing. I have a number of employees that cannot find an affordable place to live. They work for hourly wage, and we're not paying bottom dollar, we're actually above the median, and they can't afford rent. So the finding somewhere to live that's affordable, I think is the biggest crisis that we're facing right now. And as Jay mentioned, North Point being an affordable option, it's going to be a while before those get on board. So we, what we've done in the last two years is, we've already gone ahead and approved a lot of low-income and workforce housing, because workforce housing is 80 to 120 of our area median income. And that's doctors, that's nurses, that's police officers. So I think housing is the biggest thing, and we have a number of projects that are, on Wednesday, we're going to be groundbreaking, or actually ribbon-cutting on one of those projects that we did approve. So yeah, so I think housing is the biggest.
I think that this city council is, and all the city workers, we're staying ahead of things. As you can see, growth is coming very quickly. You know, everybody's worried about growth and how that's going to affect us. We got a traffic coming, we got people that drive differently from different states, but we're staying ahead of the game, and that's the most important thing. You know, when you look at the allocation of tax dollars, we spent $14 million, is invested annually, at least safely, 3.5 on cities parks and facilities, $3 million for city streets or maintenance operation, $1 million for community development, and $500,000 annually invested in general services. That's how you stay ahead of the game. That's how you make sure you're leading in the proper way, you have vision, you're looking at, you have vision, you see what's coming at you, and you address it like that, you don't wait till it get in our face and then try to address it. So I think we're doing a great job. I'm not that concerned, because I'm very confident and optimistic in you as citizens and my colleagues that are city council.
Could you repeat the question for us?
Yeah. We're still not hearing very well.
Not at all.
Yeah.
Trying to get.
We're close to your mouth, but the mic's doing it.
Okay, try to get things tight to our mouths. What is your top concern in the city, and how do you think it could be addressed during your term?
So like others are saying, I think housing is our top concern. With all of these tax increases that are on the ballot coming up, it's going to become even more difficult. If, we can't have both low-cost housing and all the bells and whistles that go with, so we need, we need to make a choice. In addition, I think our second most important is water use. We're running out of water, and we need to conserve it. And my plan is to create a plan to where the city properties transition to zero scape and to reduce the amount of water required to water those lawns. And then create different types of campaigns and incentives to help others create their yards into zero scapes. And then my last part of that is to utilize the new wastewater treatment plant to look into water reuse for golf courses and things like that. And those are my.
How's your wedding?
Yeah, thank you. So for me, it's one answer, growth, but it's an umbrella. There's multiple facets that fall under growth, whether it's affordable housing in the city, whether it's water, water is a big topic, as we all know with the state currently. The city has put conservation efforts in, I work with the Parks Committee on, we have three pilot projects going out on changing the entrances of the city into zero scaping, so we can monitor and understand what our water conservation bills look like and what they are, and actually have a tangible number associated with those. We've already changed a lot of what city, we've already put conservation into the city code, but how we can move together more effectively for water conservation. I've already touched on affordable housing, but again, you're going to hear me be a broken record, I'm an engineer. We want to provide the affordable housing, I don't disagree, that's a huge topic, but what about the citizens that already live here as the city's growing? How do we make sure we're not running out of water? How do we make sure we're looking at the 97s, we're working with ODOT to make improvements to that as we see it deteriorate? How do we make sure we're taking care of the city streets and being responsible for the growth and holding developers accountable as we continue to build? So like I said, I look at it as an umbrella. Growth is huge, but there are a lot of moving parts within that umbrella.
Councilor Coleman, we'll start with you.
Jay?
Yeah, you want first?
Do you feel Redmond has a problem with homelessness, and do you believe the city needs a permanent shelter for homeless people?
So the first, the first question is, do we have a problem? Yes. Yes, I think everywhere in Oregon right now has a bad problem with it. What the problem is, is we have very few shelters, we have very few services for our homeless community. There's a lot of people that are on drugs, there are a lot of them that are, have mental issues that need help, and we need facilities for them to give them that help. Do we need permanent shelter? Well, we've started that process, so with Oasis Village out east of town, which we spearhead on this current council, we have a low-barrier shelter now for people that, living in the dirt, in the dirt, jukeers. We're expanding that site with another facility through Mountain View Development to have some more supportive shelter. So trying to keep our neighbors who unfortunately are houseless, to give them some kind of space for them to live and have some kind of dignity instead of living in the dirt and the jukeers. So yes, we do have a problem. Yes, we need some facilities for our team, but we need to work with the county to make sure that we have health services to support the issue, underlying issues. Thank you.
Yes, we do have a problem. One of the things that we, one of the problems that we have is we need wraparound services, and we don't have that yet, but we're working on it. The fact of the matter is, even though we have a problem, the whole United States has a problem, homelessness, so that's nothing new. But the problem is, I mean, what is the problem, is that we're staying ahead of it, and we're staying on top of it the best that we can. So we're doing our best, we're not all over the street and roaming all over the neighborhood, so I'm sure you guys are happy about that, you know? So the fact that we're able to contain it in such a manner that when people come here, they don't even know we have homes, I had people say to me, "You don't even have homeless people." Well, we do, we just do a good job of containing them. And again, with wraparound services, that would help, you know, when they stripped down the mental institutions many years ago, the jail became the place to put mentally ill individuals. That, we created our own homeless people by doing that. Because once you go to jail and you get out, you can't get a job, you can't get housing, because now you have a record. So we're creating our own problems. So the most important thing is to help prevent people from going to jail. People, young people that can't afford the vacant houses now, make sure they don't get kicked out, and then, you know, just keep working and containing the best that we can.
So I, I do believe we have a homeless problem, and it's getting worse, it's not getting better. I don't want to contain homelessness, I want to, I want to get rid of homelessness. And I think there's, there is no place, I think that we need to subsidize permanent housing for, for the homeless, I don't think we need a permanent shelter. But I do think we need a transitional program to help people who are, who are really hard on economic times that, that need a hand up, and we can help those kind of people. But the people who are addicted to drugs and mentally ill, they need a different kind of treatment, and, and that requires clinicians. And, and creating a, a permanent structure with clinicians, I think, will do more harm than good. So I think focusing more on, on helping the people who are on economic times that need to lift up, we need to do that. But I'm a firm believer in treating adults like adults, and if, if you're breaking the law, you're breaking the law. And, and I don't think that the current, you know, the status quo is, is doing the taxpayers or the citizens of the city any justice. So I would, I would take part in the stance of homelessness, and, and my time is up.
Do we have a problem, and acknowledge that we have a problem? Yes. Is everyone human? Yes. Council strongly believes that, and over the last, my last four years on council, we have been making strides to, I don't want to say tackle the problem, but provide sustainable solutions for the situation we're sitting in now. We've worked with several service providers, we've worked closely with the county, Tobias already touched on Oasis Village, safe parking has been instituted. Everyone deserves a chance, and for me, it's something that has to be reliable and sustainable in working with service providers or providing services, that doesn't disappear when the funding goes away. So how can we actually make that happen and not just put a Band-Aid on the problem? I do, again, feel that we've made some great strides, we've got more in the works that we've been focusing on, affordable housing, workforce housing, we touched on North Point earlier, we were just discussing that earlier today. That's, that's huge, and I feel it's something that Redmond hasn't maybe done in the past, but because we know that there's a problem, that we acknowledge there's that, that situation, we're trying to make changes, we're trying to instill the sustainable efforts to support the city and support those that are houses because housing is not available, affordable housing is not available.
All right, do we have a problem? Yes. Seven years ago, when I was on council, probably 2000, I guess it was, we brought Bethlehem in, came into the hotel, it was part of a state project to help fund for the homeless. So we started back then, it's not a new thing. I'm going to break it down, I have to do that. Homelessness is drug addicts, drug addiction, mental issues, alcoholism, it's people who just like to live without rules. And that group of people, I think, needs to be handled, or needs not handled, needs to be given to the federal government and the state government to provide for. They tore down all the, all the buildings that we had that were there to help the people with mental issues, drug addiction. They need to step up and get those funded here in Redmond, so that we can have someplace to, to direct those people. There are people who need just a hand up, they lost a job, they lost a house, they're really trying, they don't want to be homeless. And I think those people are the ones that we can help and should help.
Thank you. Councilor Ewan, we'll start with you with this next question. What incentive, incentives and strategies would you support to increase workforce housing and attract more living wage jobs to Redmond?
Well, first of all, we think that we're going to have to build more houses to address the housing issue, workforce housing, well, hold on. So with the workforce housing, we just need to make sure that there's enough livable, livable wages for them to be able to afford, first of all. So we have housing, but we don't have livable wages. We can't allow people to move We can't allow people to move in town, all around the town, companies to come to town and open up businesses or companies, and they don't pay enough for people to pay rent. I just talked to them a couple other day, the grocery store, and they couldn't even buy groceries, so I offered them to buy groceries, they said, "No, they don't want it." But the fact of the matter is, the fact that they couldn't even buy groceries. So if we're going to take care of our citizens, and we're going to take care of our youth, which is your youth, because it's unfortunate that the kids that are looking in this town can't even afford to live in this town, and no one seems to have a problem with that. And that's a big problem. So there's another thing that we can't do, and I think just, you know, hold people to the fire when it comes to livable wages.
Mr. Lawyer.
So we need, we need to address the housing issue, obviously, and, and we need to put in essentially a speed link for billing permits. In doing, also, we need to reduce the amount of cost to the contractors, whether it's permitting fees or other associated fees. I'm not a contractor, so I'm not, I've never built a house, I don't know what those fees are, but we need to make it as economic as possible for the builders to do their job. We also need to look at creative solutions, whether it's, you know, kit homes, or, you know, I know Adair has, you know, several packages that they can throw up fairly quickly. I think that's a good option for workforce housing. And in terms of business, I think we need, we need to work on the homeless issue, because I know I've been out and talking to business owners, and, and it's a real problem for them. They're investing a lot into our community, and they don't, they don't feel like they're getting any help with, with their homeless issues that are, you know, camping out in front of the businesses and whatnot. So we need to get rid of the homeless issue, or at least lower it, and then create incentives for, for larger businesses, whether it's tax payments or, or lowering billing costs or, or fees for larger businesses to come into the community and, and create more jobs for us and our, and our families.
Redmond is a viable place for growth, and industries are attracted here. As a city council, it's our responsibility, if they move into our economic development areas, anywhere that the city has the chance to be involved, we're responsible for making sure they're paying livable wage, and we have to hold them to that. That couples in with, I've touched on annexations, where we have predecessors that designed master plans 20 years ago that none of us have been involved in, but they're holding our feet to the fire and binding our hands, so we have to approve these annexations. So how can we work with these developers to ensure that a percentage of it is affordable housing, a percentage of it is workforce housing? Because the only way we can attract industries for those livable wages or that have those livable wages with jobs is by ensuring they have somewhere to live. So I think it's a, it's a two-point with housing, which obviously it's, we're brooding wheel up here about it, but it's true. If, but we can't attract those industries and those jobs into town if we don't have the homes available or even the apartments, it's just not feasible. So it's, it's a multifaceted approach for us, but it's responsible to council that we just don't let an industry come into town and not pay a livable wage, not pay at affordable, affordable rate for someone to be able to live in town.
Sure. What incentive, incentives or strategies would you support to increase workforce housing and attract more living wage jobs to Redmond?
I think, I think the city of Redmond has always provided incentives for business to move into Redmond by cutting taxes on, on them or that type of thing. I think the problem is housing. We have, and that's, the county gave us 40 acres for free. All we have to do is figure out how to build and what to build. And we have sat on that, we have, because I sat on it for a couple of years, and now the council's sat on it for a couple more years. We're letting, it seems like we're letting, we're letting the developer figure out that whole project for us, and they should not be the ones to figure it out. We should be creating small tiny houses, be putting, putting some apartments, putting in some duplex, putting in some, some manufactured homes, some things that are affordable for people. And the idea of affordable housing is just driving gas. Because having the government, federal government pay for the house so you can afford to pay the other part, it's not affordable housing in my book. Building a house is something you can fit into and pay for, that's affordable housing.
So two more questions. First part is, we work really closely with Reddy, which is the development of Redmond, and we, they do great things with attracting industrial, any type of businesses to Redmond to provide great jobs for our, our citizens. The second part, as we alluded to, is a little bit harder, is the housing part. So as I, I talked about earlier, I have a little note here that we on council have approved 848 new units coming out of Oregon within the next five years. That, that's through, and that's affordable housing. So there was about three city-initiated projects, and then there's a whole bunch that we helped out with, whether it's tax payment or helping some funding to make sure they got off the ground. So that's real concrete things that this council really has done in the last two years to make sure that we're providing that affordable house. As I said, it was the number one thing I think is, is facing our, our, our city, is having those affordable places for people to live and work in town. And so, yeah, I, I think tax, more tax payments, working with rooted homes, which provides lower income and homeownership along with continually more housing, to make sure that we can go from renting to owning, because right now that gap is huge, is you can't go from renting to owning without a huge lottery winner or something like that. So that's it.
Thanks. Mr. Lawyer, back to you to start with our next round of questions. What can be done to reduce speeding through town and make streets safer for drivers, for pedestrians and pedestrians?
So I've been out knocking on a lot of doors, and this topic comes out a lot. And one lady comes to mind, she lives on Maple Street, right out over the bridge, and she told me that, you know, cars are just racing up and down all night. And that's a perfect spot, in my opinion, for speed bumps. Speed bumps are a great, cheap alternative, you know, it doesn't need to be around about, it costs millions of dollars. I'm all for saving the taxpayers money, so let's do some, some speed bumps where necessary. Also, we need to increase our traffic enforcement. I go through a school zone every day, and I've not once seen a cop in, in the school zone. And there are people who are clearly speeding. So we need to increase our enforcement of the, you know, getting patrols out, looking for speeders. Another cost, cost-effective way is to put those signs, it illuminates, you know, what your speed actually is. Studies find that those actually do reduce speed, speeders, and I think we could strategically place those, whether it's on, on Maple or on, you know, on all roads really, if we needed to. But I think those are some cost-effective ways to, to reduce the speeding in our city.
Yeah, so we, we do get a lot of comments about speeding in town, and we're very familiar as a council with the lady down off of Maple on the up north side of the bridge from Walmart. And we did put signage in on Maple to track, we'll, we'll do traffic studies. City staff is great, we'll alert them to the issue. They put in the illuminated signs that track the speed, and they actually tracked what are the speed levels on that road where we're getting complaints. Now, one of the other things we did in that particular instance, it was a concern for schoolchildren. Schoolchildren were crossing the road, there were people turning up at Maple, Paul and Tail down the road, so we looked at cost-effective solutions to put in a crosswalk, put in illuminated crosswalk signs, and that happens around town. We take these citizen comments seriously, and we do a full traffic study, we look at where 35th will come up with the new, the new facility, our security facility coming in. We understand that there is a need for public safety and protecting the public, so we do our due diligence to make sure that we're going through the proper channels, and when we see the need, where we can find the funding, where we can put those, those safety factors in, and that's how we prioritize it as a council.
Yeah, I, I agree that there is a problem with that. We have it around where we do. Kids park around in the, by the Penn Sports, and they race up and down the hill, they race up around our house. So they, they, and I say kids, I don't know who it is, but it's not my wife, I know that. But it's hard, because we drive, when we drive to the church, we drive, and I stop at the stop sign, that I look back and forth several times before I cross, because it's a street where people, it's a long straight stretch, and people have been known to probably go a little faster than they should. So I watch that street when I cross it. The, probably what needs to be done, or what's, what I would suggest, is we continue to, to increase our public safety. We hire more police officers. We, we do the things that Al and we talked about. We just, we, we can't do anything more. The speed bumps are, are, they work great, I think. And so maybe those are the answers. We just have to keep focused on, and keep working on it.
So, yeah, speeding is a problem. I think the number one complaint we get in the city is traffic issues, whether it's people speeding in zones where they shouldn't be, or whether there's, like, I live near Sixth Street, and I think all night they're doing drag strips down, down Sixth Street, because I hear those mufflers just going all night long, and it's, it's something that needs to be addressed. So there's a number of different ways you can do, take a look at that. The, the illuminated speed sign, but sometimes it's a challenge overnight for those kids to see how fast they can go. But there's also speed bumps, there are bump outs, which is more of an architectural things, where you can make the sidewalks actually closer to the center, because as you narrow, people slow down because they don't know what's coming in the other direction. So we're looking at all the different ways that we can look at specific intersections, specific roads, where these are problems, and see what we can do to make sure that our streets are safe.
Yes, traffic is definitely a problem. What we need to do is to, we have to, first of all, there's a lot of people moving here, moving here from all parts of the country, okay? And everyone's driving differently. And as we get increased traffic in our town, people look for backstreets to shoot down and get around town, so that's a problem. But, um, yeah, the illuminated signs is good, we need more enforcement, you know, but, um, and then we just need to pay attention, everyone just needs to pay more attention. And the speed bumps, that probably won't work, but you know, we have our engineers looking at that, discussing it, and as the town grows, we'll try, we'll try to stay ahead of it, you know, but we're doing the best that we can right now. But, um, you know, just because you don't see a police officer in a specific spot at a specific time, doesn't mean they're not doing their job. It could be, mean that they're somewhere else, which that's what the issue is. So, um, yeah, we can look, as the town grows, we may have to increase our traffic department in the police force, but, uh, you know, there's not much we can do, but just, we need to do the right thing, you know? Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Redding, we'll start with you. What specific actions would you recommend the city do to promote water conservation?
Oh, good, the water engineer got the water question. Yeah. No, I think it's, so, there, there's multi, multi-points with this. I, I do feel, as I've already touched on, the city has taken a, or done a great job of the three pilot projects we've already mentioned, with changing out zero escaping, or changing to zero escaping to understand what our water conservation actually looks like. It's looking at incentives for homeowners to reduce their water usage and how they can benefit from doing so, as we're starting to see more and more water scarcity. Now, I'm having a brain block, it's covered. They're, I mean, out, working with HOAs. So HOAs require a lot of the time for homeowners to have turf or have green scape. How can we work with the state to not require HOAs to make their homeowners have turf? If they want to put pebble rock in, let them put pebble rock in. But how, our hands are tied currently, and we've had a lot of discussions about it, how can the, the citizens have an incentive and benefit if they wanted to break out their turf and not irrigate, and thereby reduce the water usage in the city? That's, those are the three biggest things we've really been talking about, and then as the city progresses with the three pilot projects, having to change out other city landscape to benefit when we know the actual, grab a minute of time, reduction that we're seeing.
Well, I'm gonna say that you're not supposed to read the internet, everything on there is not true, but I did read the paper, that said that Redmond's increasing in population, our water usage is perverse and down. So what the council's doing is a good thing. I think that people need to be responsible. I think the water every other day is working. I think I suggested that we maybe don't, maybe don't build so many golf courses, although I like to golf. So the answer is just keep plugging away and doing what we're doing. Making the people more aware of the water they use. And getting a lot of people to not use any water is never gonna happen. At least not in my household. But making more aware of what, what, how much water we do have and what the restriction should be is, is right, and I think we're moving in that direction right now.
Thank you for the compliment. I appreciate you. So we live in the desert, I hope everyone knows that. So we're in a place where water is not recharging as fast as other places. So Ben and Sisters have the advantage of being right at the base of the cascade, so all that snow that melts every year goes into the ground and it hits their aquifer or our aquifer on that side a lot quicker than it does out here in Redmond. So I don't, we're not in any risk of running out of any water anytime soon. We have a thousand-foot aquifer, and we've only gone down 20, 30 feet so far, but it is declining, so that's an issue. So that's why we're taking the steps to make sure that we're adding conservation measures to make sure that it is not declining anymore, that we have sustainable aquifer, that we have water certainty moving forward for the next generation. So a few things that we were doing is, we're looking at our code, as Shannon said, and seeing how we can incorporate zero escaping into the code, and so that developers want to use it. Looking at our public areas and making sure we can remove irrigatable turf from anywhere we can so that we reduce our water usage. And then also partnering with our, our friends and farmers out in the outskirts that have unregulated wells that are unmonitored, to make sure that we are all doing our part to make sure that our aquifer stays at the same level or rises over time.
Well, my colleagues have said a lot, so what I will say is that we are taking steps to address water conservation. The mayor is doing what he needs to do to move this forward. We as citizens have responsibility as well, and by taking responsibility as citizens, we can save a lot more, because we have an aqua hall, which is part of the city's plan to, you can give shower aids there and reduce your water uses and things, things like that. So that's important. But you know, we, I, we're a city council, we're here to serve you, but what I want to say is that you as citizens have responsibility as well when it comes to traffic, water, and all these things. I mean, I'm not telling you to solve it, but what I'm saying to you, we have to work on this together, because that's what cities do. It's not just the six of us, the mayor up here and the city manager running the show. We're trying to serve you, and we're doing the best that we can. So that's what I have to say. Not much more.
I will admit, I got a frowny face when I watered Bill. So we need to take it upon ourselves to look at the way us as individuals use our water. I'm all about individual responsibility, and...
I'm all about individual responsibility, and we need to, I would agree that the council are taking, the current council is taking steps to make this issue less of an issue, and I applaud it for that. The big thing that communities, suck the water out of communities is golf courses, and we have three of them. So we need to look at alternatives and things that we can incentivize the golf courses to reduce their water. I know it's how they make their money, but there are ways. I'm also a proponent of, of the city itself changing their turf out, pretty much right now. I used to work at the wastewater treatment plant, a place that no matter what goes, and they have turf, and it's irrigated all summer long. It's, it's a bit silly. So, I think it's a multiple-step plan. We as individuals need to look at ourselves and our water use. The city needs to look at how much water they're wasting, and we need to come up with a plan to work with the golf courses to minimize the amount of water they use.
Perfect, thank you. We have time for one more question here before we get to our final statements. Mr. Patrick, we'll start with you. If you have volunteered in the past or are currently volunteering, please share the organizations you have worked with, and if you believe volunteering is important.
Yes, I believe all of the hearing is important. I started in high school, and that was a long time, really. I've been on council here, I've been on council in Redmond for twenty-four years. I was on CYC for twenty-two of those years. I'm still on CYC, representing the county now. And that's an important regional board, it does a lot of things for the whole Central Oregon community. Those are the two main boards, but I've been on the airport board for, I don't know, eighteen, twenty years. And that was, I love that, that was a great board to be on, and be involved in how the airport's growing. And, okay, fair enough. So, those are just four of the boards that I'm picking up right now, that I've been on, and all of them important for the community, and for what they're doing, and for the city of Redmond, so.
I started volunteering very young. I think I was in high school when I started volunteering. I actually was a volunteer basketball coach for elementary schools, and I kept that going. I was, when I lived in Charlotte, I went, we did the food bank, and we went, we sorted food out there, which was super fulfilling, is just knowing that this food that was donated was going to some very hungry people. When I got here, I unfortunately have not found a great place to volunteer, but I've been on a lot of boards, just like Jay. Hospitality Alliance of Central Oregon is trying to make people understand that hospitality is a career, not just a summer job that some people do. I was on the chamber board as a volunteer to make sure that our businesses in downtown have support. I mean, it's hard to start a business, it's hard to, you know, be profitable in this economy. Redmond Downtown Association is another group of business owners downtown, trying to help each other out. We want, we want everyone to be successful in the downtown area. So those are just a few of the boards that I've been part of.
I'm not gonna talk about the former boards that I sat on, but I will talk about my volunteer work with youth, because I believe our youth is our future. I coached athletes in boxing, basketball, football, swimming, you name it, I coached all those things. I also was, I started a group in Portland called Streetwise, and that group was to help young youth relate with police law enforcement much better, so things have worked out really well, you know, but, you know, volunteer work is very important. We have things over the time that you guys can sit on. The other thing is just come to city council. You know, we enjoyed it to come to city council. City council didn't have a lot of people coming on it when I first got on. Now we have people participating. That's what you do, you come and participate, because that's very important. But let's not lose sight of our youth. You know, remember, what we're doing now is not for us to have. Anyway, the youth is our future, okay? And we need to think about this and move this forward, because what we're planning and putting in place may not be done, well, may not be done on block either, but still, you know, we're looking at the future. So I've done volunteer work, and I think it's very important, and to give back to your community, that's the best way to do it. Thank you.
So, when I was in college, I spent a lot of time volunteering. One of them was, we made care packages for the homeless, and another, another group, I can't remember the name, they probably don't want me to mention it anyway, but there was this organization that helped better women and children, and we would help them get resources and placement and different housing to them, and things like that. So in the past, I have done volunteering in different capacities. Currently, I'm the president of the Board of the Clean Northwest Clean Water Association, the local section, and that's an organization where we find, we create networking opportunities for different water and wastewater operators, as well as educational resources, classes and things like that. So, that's something I'm currently working on, and I actually have a meeting coming up next week, so I'm hoping to get some education for some of our wastewater operators.
So I too started volunteering in high school as part of National Land Society, and that's where I found my love for serving, serving the public. All four years of my undergrad in school, I was part of a service organization that the sole purpose of the organization was philanthropy, whether we were going out and visiting local senior centers, retirement homes, cleaning up, we had two miles of adopted highway that we do a lot of clean up every six months. So just really serving the community as a whole became a passion in my twenties, when a lot of people aren't always focused on that. I too have served on several committees and commissions, Historic Landmarks Commission, when I first came on the council, now I'm with RAPRD as liaison, I'm with Parks as liaison, and I'm with BPA, which is a bicycle, bicycle pedestrian advisory committee. So we talked a lot about speeding and things like that in town, so those are, and water conservation, those are a lot of the things that those committees focus on. In my professional career, I've served on several commissions and committees as well, very similar talent for professional development. I mentor a lot of these large conferences that I go to for new professionals coming into the industry to make sure that they're guided in the right direction, to get that training, to understand where they want their career to go. And so that's really where my heart lies, is, I love people. I love people, I love helping people, so I think that's inherently critical to serving as a city council member.
All right, thanks. Finish off with two minutes of a closing statement, and Councilor Gold, we'll start with you.
I get to go first, great. I just want to thank the League of Women's Voters, thank you for putting this on in this city club of Central Oregon. We are facing a precedent of growth in Central Oregon, and specifically Redmond, and we have some challenges. We've talked about a few of them today, housing, water, homelessness, a number of different issues. And we need a council that is working on the issues and working on moving forward. It's not about one person, that's why you vote for three of them at a time. It's about the group as a whole, and right now, we've been really working well together. We don't all politically align. We all have different opinions, but when we come together, we can come together to get things done for the city of Redmond and for its citizens. So, with my perspective as a business operator and independent voice, I believe I'm uniquely qualified to be a councillor for the next four years. We have a lot of work still to do. We have a lot of challenges that are gonna be in front of us, but I think we can move forward responsibly. And I would appreciate your vote, and be honored to receive your vote for city council. Thank you.
Well, first of all, thank the League of Women's Voters for inviting me yesterday. It's been a pleasure. You know, like I said, I have thirty-plus years of experience, but that's not a big thing, big thing is the fact that I'm committed to this job, I have the energy, I have the time, and I want to see the city growing right way. We, like my colleague said, you know, we may not always agree or get along, but that's life, that's just the way it goes. But the fact of the matter is that we're all here to do a job for you, really your public service, you know? I don't care about political background, what benefits behind me, and all that nonsense, that's a distraction. What we need to do, like I said, is focus on the future. What do we want to see in the future? What do you want your kids to see in the future? And focus on that, because whether or not, we're family, we're all in this town together. So we either wanna get along or we won't get along, but it's better to get along. So I just want to thank all of you guys for being with us, thank you very much.
I'm seeking your vote for city council, and this is why. I am a believer of accountability for the government. I am a proponent of fiscal responsibility. I want to keep as much money in your pocket as possible. I want to see common sense and practical solutions for the problems that we face, and I believe that I'm able to do that. I was in the Navy, I've worked with every race, religion, and sexual orientation, known to man, and I was able to do it successfully, and navigate very awkward situations. And I believe that I am a good choice for the community, and for your pocketbooks. Vote for Alan Lawyer.
I have sincerely enjoyed serving the last four years, which is why I chose to run again for another four years. As we've all already talked about, Redmond is growing, and I've enjoyed to see the strides that we've made over the last four years, and would love to see how that continuous momentum goes on. That's what's exciting, that's what, that's what drives me about serving the citizens of Redmond. I've already said it, responsible growth. We don't want to outgrow our infrastructure, we don't want to outgrow what we have in place. We need to make sure that we're holding people accountable, developers accountable, annexations, everything. And that's, again, something that's just near and dear to my heart, water, obviously, you're out of water, I'll pee out of water all day, but that's the hottest topic that we're all seeing in the news lately. So that comes into that umbrella I talked about earlier, that's one of the facets, and we need to make sure as a council, we're making informed decisions. And as all of y'all as voters, I implore you to make an informed decision when you put your ballot in. Know what people stand for, know their backgrounds, know the experience they have, and that's why I'm asking y'all to vote for me for another four years. I would really love to continue to serve the city of Redmond.
I'm Jay Patrick, I'm ready for city council. Please remember that when you fill your ballot out. My wife is born here in Redmond, I've been here for sixty-one years, and seen Redmond grow from two thousand to what it is today. We are both, my wife and I are a team, we're both vested in rights, and we're, we're gonna be here probably until the day I die. I have always loved to serve as council, that's the reason I'm, after two years, that's the reason I'm coming back to serve as council hopefully, and I'm asking for your vote. I would love to continue to look at how to build Redmond in the best way for its citizens. And I would love to have that opportunity to have the citizens in meetings four times a year, where we could all talk about what's important to us, and not as council and community, but in one room, where we can sit shoulder to shoulder and talk about what's, what's on our mind. So I would love for you to remember my name when you're filling out that ballot, Jay Patrick.
Thank you. Thanks to all candidates for participating in tonight's forum, I don't think we had to cut anybody off, well done, you're a well-behaved group, appreciate it. Let's get to the audience. Ballots were mailed October sixteenth, they're probably in your mailbox by now, so make sure you get your ballots postmarked by election day, November fifth. Your vote is your voice, so make sure your voice can be heard. For more information about all of these candidates, please check out votefor11.org. Thanks for everyone for participating, we'll do a quick break here, stretch our legs, and we'll be back with the mayor of all candidates here in just a minute.